What's wrong? My exposure.
I didn't like working.
And.
Instead of.
All right, we're ready to begin.
Great. Well, it's six o'clock and I'm in call to order this Lacey Council work session and it's July thirteenth. All council members are present, but we do have Michael Stenon who is attending remotely. We also have amended agenda tonight. We had a couple of agenda items that were you're going to discuss, but Jen is not here with us. And so we're going to move that to a future date. And so we will only have one agenda item tonight. Motion to approve the men agenda, which will be taken out the 2024 Regional Ethic Complex Financial Plan and the 2023 Lacey Park Culture and Recreation Comprehensive Plan. And we will just have the TC Media Television Production and Programming Services discussion today.
Move some. They're moved to approve the corrective agendas.
Second, is there any discussion? There are none. I'll appear that motion signify by saying aye.
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 Is there, is there anyone to post? And that motion you now actually carries, we have an amended agenda. And one thing we're amended agenda is TC Media and Television Production and Programming Services discussion. I'll turn it over to Shannon.
Well, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council Members. I feel special being the single agenda item here this evening. We are here as the mayor indicated to talk about TC Media and the television television production services. Let me just start a quick PowerPoint. You want to recognize that this has been a conversation that has come before the city council previously back in September of 2022, as well as a work session in December of 2022. And we are here tonight to kind of go back over some of the information. Although we won't go over all of the information that was presented at those meetings, but certainly if anybody would like to take a look at those materials, they are provided as part of staff report. So just a quick summary and we'll get into the details of this and there's several sections we want to cover. But the recommendation that was provided in the staff report is to continue to evaluate alternative options as part of the 2024 budget process. And if there were any changes to what we currently have to notify TC Media as soon as possible of those changes. And to continue to collaborate with our neighboring jurisdictions. Do have a fiscal note and that is providing both some of the TC Media proposals, which we'll take a deeper look into. This is just providing a very high level overview and we'll get into the nuances here in just a second. Which would be for all pegged services at about $209,000 and then government only. There are several options and there are several options also for all peg, which we will get into. But government only would be around $73,000. The alternative internal option would be approximately $130,000 for an ongoing FTE, which we would anticipate would spend approximately 25% of their time providing government services. And then 75% would be spent on other communication needs. In addition to a one FTE, there would be some one-time capital costs that would be necessary to start a government access channel here internally. And so we anticipate that those costs, again, this would be a one-time cost would be around 50 to 70,000 dollars. And we'll dive into that in much more detail throughout this presentation. So what we wanted to go over with the council tonight as part of the presentation is one again, just to provide a general peg overview. And then talk about some of the actions that the city has taken recently to improve government transparency. Then to transition to an overview of the history of PEG here in Thurston County, as well as the TC Media proposal, which you all should have as part of your agenda packet tonight as attachment one. And then take a look at the alternative option in a little bit more detail as well. So starting off with the PEG overview and government transparency, I know we again went over this, but there has been a pretty seismic change over the last decade or so with cable and community access television. We have seen the advent of smartphones and other accessible video technologies. At the same time, we've also seen the proliferation of a lot of social media and online platforms where you can put up video content. I give you the example of YouTube, that is one of many. And then you've also seen the decline of public access studios and channels. When we were talking about cable and public PEG, just generally speaking, it's really hard to track cable viewership. It's much easier to track viewership on streaming platforms. And something we've seen nationally is that cable subscriptions have been declining as more and more consumers go to streaming services. I provided this graph last time we went over the materials, but I thought it would be good just to point this out again. When we're talking about declining cable services, the Pew Research Center in 2021 found that the share of Americans who say they watch television via cable or satellite has plunged from 76% in 2015 to 56% this year. And I want to make a note that this year was 2021. And so I would have to imagine that this trend has continued as streaming has become more and more popular. This is particularly noticeable also with younger generations. If you look at ages 18 to 29, it went from 65% to 34%. We did an initial scan of just kind of PEG services here in Washington State last time we talked and looking at information that was readily available from this list of public access television stations, as well as kind of a really quick scan of Washington State. If you provide some sort of PEG services, and I should just take a pause and say that PEG stands for public access, education access and government access. I know we commonly talk an acronym here at the government and I do apologize for not breaking that down earlier. Just as a reminder, the the city or any jurisdiction that has a franchise is not obligated to provide all PEG services or any PEG services. So looking at this initial scan of jurisdictions here in Washington that do provide some sort of public education or government access, 70 and a half percent of Washington jurisdictions, based on this information, do not provide public access channels. So you can see government here, just government access was 36 out of the 51 jurisdictions that was found on this particular site.
Does that mean so 70% of cities are not televising or doing anything with their council meetings or anything that means?
That that does not mean that that is the case. And I think that is a really important distinction of this is just going back to slide. This is just jurisdictions that this site had indicated did have some degree of either public access, education or government. So you can see we've got on this left-hand side, this is just government 36. Just public access seven. So I think that is a good distinction that this does not include every jurisdiction. There are jurisdictions out there that do not provide any form of PEG. And we'll take a look at an example of that. The city of Lakewood is an example of they don't have public access, education access or government access. But that doesn't mean that they don't provide their public meetings virtually. They stream all of their public meetings, council meetings on YouTube. We took a look at our peer jurisdictions and again, last time we reviewed this, we had peer jurisdictions ranging from 40,000 to just under 100,000. And we took a look at whether or not they provided PEG services. And what we found was that 73% of our peer jurisdictions did not provide public access channels. So that is 14 out of the 19 cities. There are 20 cities up there and that is because we include the city of Lacey as part of the study here. So just to kind of give a visual way to look at that, what I'm showing here on this graph are all of the teal bars. Those are cities that do provide PEG public access services. And then the kind of red orange bars are the jurisdictions that do not provide public access. And then the two gray bars, Kennewick, it was unknown and Lakewood, like I said, doesn't provide any of those services. So they do not have a public education or government access. Taking another kind of look at that, when you visually put them all together, peer jurisdictions with public access channels, it's 14, do not. One was unknown, that was Kennewick. And then we have five that do have public access. And we took a little bit of a deeper dive and that was Yakima, Bellingham, Lacey, Olympia and Framerton. And what we found was they offer P and G and Yakima, Bellingham and Framerton, but they also do that in-house rather than through contracts.
This was that same presentation you gave in December, right?
Well, this is a new slide, but we did provide this information, which is where this is based off of.
Right.
And then kind of looking at our own kind of history, I know. Looking at our designated service history here at the city of Lacey, this is showing our contract services with TC Media. And we reviewed this last time. And really what I wanted to highlight was the 500 hour marker I've kind of put here in bold. And that's typically around where the city has used its government services that we have contracted out with TC Media. The red orange shows all of our unused hours. We currently contract 700 hours. But when we kind of look at it, it's closer to seven or 500, excuse me. I would say that we do want to just note that 2020 was pandemic and then 2021 was coming out of the pandemic. But even if you're looking pre-pandemic, you can see it kind of hovers right around that 500 hour marker.
But we could have used those other hours. We just didn't use it.
Well, I think that's a really, really good point, Mayor. But it is also really good to recognize that just because you have contract hours, you also need staff to oversee and direct what those contract hours are spent on. So things even like public service announcements that would require staff resources to make sure that that PSA that was being put together has all of the correct information, that it's, you know, meeting city standards and kind of how and what the distribution looks like. So there is still some staff work that would need to go into using those hours. And there's staff work that goes into all of the rest of the used hours. You know, as an example, with council meetings, you know, we have, you know, John Koch, as an example, also helping facilitate some of the streaming services. Same with some of our entertainment and other events as well. I do want to highlight, just turning to the city really quickly, and since this is kind of a new addition for us. And just another way to kind of bring this to the public's attention is that all of our public meetings are available online and that is live as well as on demand. And our latest addition to that is through our civic clerk portal, in addition to our YouTube, Facebook and through Zoom. So the public can now access all of our public meetings here on the homepage, front and center. You can see we've added a new icon that allows people to go to the public meeting portal. And through there you can scroll through all of our public meetings. You can also search by type of public meeting if you'd like to. And then you can click this icon, which is the media icon, and you can pull up a live stream or a on-demand version of the meeting. So what this is showing right now is the council meeting from July 6th through the system when you hit that button for media. And the great thing about this new system is number one, it's got a much higher quality than our previous Granicus system. In addition to that, it's got bookmarks that are readily accessible, allowing members of the public to jump to whatever they would like to hear using this right-hand bar. And then in addition, on the left-hand side, one of the great features about this is it is a kind of one-stop shop for all of the information provided at our public meetings. So you can get all of the agendas, minutes, agenda packets, et cetera.
That's really slick.
And who's producing this video, right? The question video?
Well, and so this, this current is part of our TC Media contract. They are helping report it with the assistance of some of our public affairs staff.
The like the going around to who has what videos? You know, who's on video, the information that comes up of who's speaking and so on to a word.
Yep. So like the switching back between camera angles and adding titles. Yep, correct.
That doesn't happen now. I was just saying that it won't happen, doesn't happen automatically. Someone has to do that.
That is correct. There, there is a switcher and somebody controls that. And the other thing I wanted to highlight just about the the new portal is that you can also subscribe. So when there are new meetings, you can get that information sent directly to your inbox. So this is whether materials such as the agenda are uploaded or after a meeting, you can subscribe. So as an example, what I'm showing here is somebody subscribing to the city council regular meetings. And you could certainly subscribe for all of our public meetings here at the city and get that information.
I know we all do.
Well, you all don't need to go through. This, this data is a little bit dated, but this is what we provided the last time we went and reviewed this. And this was just a kind of snapshot of where people were accessing information on Lacey City Council regular meetings dating back to February of 2022. And what it's showing you is it's got viewership here in the blue by YouTube and in the red by Facebook. And then in the green by our old former system Granicus, which we have now transitioned to civic clerk. And then we've got our purple here showing Zoom and then the bright pink showing TC Media. So when we're looking at what we can find for streaming information, and I do want to just make the notification that this does not include cable. This is just streaming again, because we can't get good information on what cable viewership is. So it is only through streaming services that most people looking at this one period of time were accessing our public meetings through our own accounts.
Unless they were watching on cable, which.
Correct. And again, we.
Then it would be through TC Media, but we would.
Correct, correct. So that was the quick overview of PEG and some of the new updates here at the city. I want to go to our second item, which is an overview of the history and then the TC Media proposal. So starting back in the mid 1980s, Olympia and Lacey and Tumwater contracted with TC Media for PEG and TV production services. In 95, TC Media moved to their current space. And then going forward, you know, about 20 plus years Comcast notified TC Media that they would no longer be paying for that lease and that TC Media would have to cover that lease space. After negotiations, TC Media was able to negotiate to stay in the space. At the same time as that happening in 2021, the jurisdictions were all working on their next cable franchise with Comcast. And they did get that signed in 2021. It's a 10-year non-exclusive franchise agreement. It includes the ability to access PEG fees. During this time, like I mentioned, TC Media was negotiating for that leased space. And all four jurisdiction representatives at the TC Media Board voted no to the new TC Media lease due to concerns over the long-term financial feasibility of covering these payments and utility payments. But TC Media did enter into that $100,000 lease.
Who represented the jurisdictions in that?
So our representative included at the time myself, Megan Porter from Thurston County, Kelly Preseth from Olympia and Anne from the city of Tumwater.
So they're all city staff.
Correct. In the summer and fall of 2022, the cities worked on a joint RMP process. And through that process, we had one submission, which was with TC Media. And at the time, the cities all decided to pursue a six-month extension to the existing contract with a 5% increase. And that was signed in December of 2022. Starting in February of 2023, TC Media representatives, and I do want to acknowledge that the executive director, Deb Vinsel, is here as well as Megan Murphy Ross, who is the board of the chair. And they started meeting with all of the representatives here in Thurston County, starting with the mayors, the county vice chair and chief executive offices, officers to discuss services. Coming out of that in March, the jurisdictions requested a financial plan that included revenues, expenditures and any escalation factors for the next five years. And they specifically requested a couple of scenarios and they were scenario one, if all jurisdictions pulled completely out. Scenario two, if jurisdictions only fund the public aspect. And then scenario three, jurisdictions do not fund the public aspect. And then scenario four, if only one jurisdiction pulls out of the TC Media contracts. In April of 2023, TC Media submitted a five-year response to the jurisdictions. And like I mentioned earlier, that full response has been included in your packet as attachment one. Taking a look at it and we'll go into kind of a deeper dive of that here in just a second, but some key takeaways. Just to kind of ground us with where we're starting, our current contract here in 2023 is about $133,000. And this does not include any PEG fees. This is just for TV services and production. PEG fees are to be used for capital expenditures. For PEG services, taking a look at the proposals, we do see that there is a pretty significant rate increase for the jurisdictions of around 58% without a significant increase in services. So again, going from about $130,000 to $132,000 to $209,000. From the response, it would be sustainable if one jurisdiction withdraws from the TC Media contracts. It would not be sustainable if multiple jurisdictions withdraw. Government access is 30% of TC Media's current operations. And jurisdictional revenue accounts for about 60 or sorry, 77% of revenue and about 83% of all of TC Media's expenditures. And government access is by itself not sustainable per the proposal. So just to kind of dive a little bit deeper into some of the options that TC Media provided, and they did provide a number of options. And so we'll go briefly just over each one of those options. But to start, they provided a kind of baseline financial plan. And this would be if all jurisdictions continue with where we currently are with services. And so I do want to highlight a couple of things before we jump into the options and that are covered in the base financial plan. So you get each jurisdictional's revenue. So this would be what the jurisdictions are agreeing to pay for services and those services change depending on the option. And then there's also some additional revenues that I would just want to highlight as we are going through these reviews. One is TC Media's earned revenues. So this would be equipment, facility fees and contract services and classes and fundraising and underwriting events and grants. So items two and three here. These have both increased significantly from what TC Media has collected as revenues in previous years. So for contract totals in 2022, right here, taking a look at earned revenues as an example, they had earned revenues about $78,000. And so looking at a increase to $148,000. And for donations and grants back in 2022, it was around $30,000 and they are anticipating increasing this to $125,000. They also show in each one of their options, their expenses. And you can see the expenses include their personnel expenses, general operating, board and staff training, development expense, business taxes and fees and rent. And then the total expenses and then also a net of the revenues with the expenses for a reserve. So in this particular base financial plan, they would be accruing about $92,415 for a reserve. I want to highlight that a couple of these are per the proposal fixed costs. So as an example, the general operating costs of $85,000 are fixed costs. The business taxes and fees of around $19,400 are fixed cost and the rent is a fixed cost of 100 and over $112,000. So looking at our first options, it would be if one jurisdiction withdraws. And TC Media did provide a detailed breakdown of each jurisdiction if they were to withdraw. A couple of just overview of notes here. Number one is that the contracts themselves would increase at a 3%. The goal of earned revenue would be to increase 20%. Fundraising would also, the goal would be to increase 20%. Personnel costs would include 11 full-time staff and then that would increase to 14 full-time staff in 2028. General operating costs have a 3% increase. Rent is adjusted biennial using a CPI. And so what they have estimated is 6% increase in most cases. And that all of these projections do not include capital funds from PEG fees. So again, this is just operating and not looking at capital. And that currently TC Media receives about $100,000 in PEG fees or capital associated costs. And I know I'm going through a lot of information, so please feel free to take a, take a pause or ask a question if you have any or else I will just kind of keep going through this and so. So we've got option A, and that is if the city of Olympia withdraws. And I wanted to highlight that it is showing you what the city's cost would be. And that would be that $209,000 per year and that would increase again throughout the years. And then also that you've got the earned, earned revenues and fundraising again at the levels that I talked about, which are significant increase from what the earned revenues were in 2022. For expenses, I just want to highlight again, that includes the general operating of the 85,000, the business taxes and fees and the rent. And you can see that with option one, if Olympia withdraws, there would still be a reserve that would be accruing. For option B, if Lacey withdraws, Lacey would not be paying any contract to TC Media. You can see what the cost would be for the other jurisdictions. And that again, all of the earned revenue and fundraising remains at the higher levels projected. And those would again anticipated to increase upward of 20% each year. And again, looking at this scenario in which Lacey withdraws, you still have your general operating, business taxes and fees and rent. And there would still be a reserve that would be accruing on a yearly basis. Looking at option C, if Tumwater withdraws, the city of Lacey, again, the contract services would be about $209,000. And you can see again that the earned revenues and the fundraising costs would be those higher than previous year costs. You can also see for expenses, again, you've got your general operating, your business taxes and your rents are all included as part of expenses. And that a net reserve would still be accruing each year of the contract. Option D is if Thurston County withdraws and you can again see that Lacey's contract cost would be $209,000. Again, just want to point out the earned revenue and the fundraising costs are the elevated. Again, with those anticipated to increase 20% every year. And again, general operating, business tax, fees, rents are all in there at the same levels as we've discussed previously. And that a net preserve would continue to approve. TC Media also provided some options on government access only by the jurisdictions. But like I mentioned earlier in the key takeaways, TC Media has indicated that this would not be a sustainable practice if the jurisdictions were to move in that direction. When we take a look at the projections here for government services only, a couple of things to highlight is that this does not include TC Media's earned revenues or grants, as I pointed out with the last couple of options. It does attribute 100% of the rent to the jurisdictional's costs. It does also include 100% of the general operating costs as well as 100% of the business taxes and fees. But based on the proposal, TC Media would look to continue to offer public access services to some degree. However, that was not included in the proposal. So I just want to highlight though that those costs are passed on to the jurisdictions. So looking at option A, production hours and channels, you can see here with this option, it is where each of the jurisdictions, cities receive 700 hours and then Thurston County would have 1,700 hours. We would continue with our channel distribution on channel three. Tumwater would continue to use channel 26. And like I indicated, TC Media production facilities per the proposal would be primarily used to support government programming. However, they would be required to generate revenue to fund public access and operations for the public access channels. So what this is showing you right here is the revenue from the jurisdictions. You can see for the city of Lacey, it's about $73,000. And then when we're looking at the expenses here for this option, again, you've got the general operating around 85,000, the business taxes around 19,000 and then the rent at 112,000. And as you can see highlighted down here, it would not be accruing a debt for the reserve. It would be a deficit. Moving to option B, this would change the number of hours. So each jurisdiction would receive 500 hours. And then they would also share equally in the cost of all four of the channels rather than just the two channels that are currently being used. And that again, TC Media's facility would be used primarily to support government programming. And that TC Media would be required to generate revenue to fund any community or public access activities that they would be engaged in. You can see each jurisdiction would be paying around $119,000 for these government access services only. And that expenses would include again, all of the general operating costs, all of the business taxes and fees and all of the rents. In this particular option, once again, you would not be accruing a reserve. And the final government only option is option C. And the final government-only option is option C, which would be equal production hours to government channels and two channels for public and educational access. And so two jurisdictions would share each of the two channels, and two channels would be used for public and education access. The facility would be primarily used to support government programming, and TC Media would be required to generate revenue for the other public and education access channels. You can see the cost for each of the jurisdictions is around ninety thousand dollars for this option. And then when you look at expenses, once again, I just want to highlight though that all of the general operating, business taxes, and rent are attributed to the expenditures for the jurisdictions, and that this would not be approving any funds for a reserve. Another option that TC Media provided is public access only, so this would not be providing any of the jurisdictions with government support for television services. And so for the city of Lacey, this would be around a hundred and eight thousand dollars. You can see that as part of their projection, TC Media is now including the earned revenues and fundraising. Again, though, at a much elevated amount comparative to twenty twenty two. And then you can see for expenditures, that this includes again those fixed costs with general operating, business taxes and fees and rents, and that in this option, there would be some reserve accruing each year. TC Media also did highlight in this response some new approaches that they were taking, including expanded online presence. So they also discussed, you know, expanding their streaming services, particularly using smart devices such as like Roku and FireSticks, as well as adding closed captioning. In June twenty twenty three, TC Media representatives continued to meet with various elected officials and chief executive officers to discuss services. And at this point, the city requested information on services, including membership rates, service provision, access. And in response to that, TC Media provided the activities report for January twenty twenty two to June twenty twenty three, which is also included in your staff report, our agenda packet tonight as attachment two to the staff report. And I will give kind of a brief overview of some of the things that were included that the city did ask about, but certainly there is more information in attachment two. So number one, they did provide some information on TC Media production, training, enrollment during this period of time. They also provided some information on summer camps for youth, and this is, you know, over one summer. This is a year and six month snapshot, but that would only include one summer period. They also provided information on facility use, so you can see on this graph, the green is showing reservations, and the light blue is showing total video projects. They also provided information on membership, and this was broken down by, excuse me. This was broken down by city, but I do want to highlight that there is no unincorporated Thurston County included in this list. And so some of these numbers for certain jurisdictions might also include some community members who might live outside of those jurisdictions. It would it would appear it would be based on, but but also address, and I think again, just knowing that some addresses don't include, you know, Thurston County, because it's based on the metropolitan statistical area, so it's going to show Olympia and not Thurston County.
That's why the numbers probably so high.
It is possible. So May and June of twenty twenty three, the jurisdictions extended their existing contracts because they were either for a three-month or a six-month. In our case, it was for a six-month contract, and so we ended up extending our contract through the remainder of twenty twenty three. And right now, we are beginning the budget process, and so we are looking to get information to put forward as part of our budget procedures. And so that is why, you know, one of the reasons we're we're here tonight to have this conversation is so that we can anticipate and have a conversation about what that will look like moving forward. And then, you know, just knowing that December thirty first, twenty twenty three, all jurisdictional contracts will expire. So with that, I have talked quite a bit, and I'd like to take a pause if there's any questions or comments.
Sir, go ahead, Ron.
So to remind you again, before the change in costs related to the lease of Comcast, what will we pay for these services and what is the front end book again for us between the new cost today? Not not looking at any of the options, but we're paying today, which is what we're paying.
So we are currently paying a hundred and thirty two thousand dollars per the contract, and that's increased, you know, and it's typically increased by like a CPI over over the years. So if you were looking for like a specific date of what the contract cost was, I'd have to get that information for you, councilmember.
So we're paying one thirty two now, well, we you don't know what we're paying in two thousand and nine or two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and eighteen.
We could get that information, I don't have it readily available on me.
I'd be also paying, excuse me, for YouTube fees and Facebook fees and our other ways of getting this out, excuse me, my voices.
And so councilmember, I might need maybe just a little bit more on YouTube fees and Facebook fees. So a lot of those platforms, the fees are pretty nominal if there are any fees. Now, there are fees for, you know, some of the services, like a like a Roku channel. But those are, again, I, you know, if I had to estimate, they're pretty low-cost fees.
But they are over beyond what we pay for TC.
And we're talking about the what the city pays currently. So I think as far as like access, you know, when we start looking at something like Civic Clerk, there is a ongoing fee. There was a one-time fee to set that up, and you know, we certainly have some nominal fees for some of our other broadcasting and streaming services.
But it's small.
As well as the staff time to manage and operate and coordinate with, we also have the internal staff that can add to that cost as well. Is there is there anything in this presentation, I know that TC Media is here, is there anything that we missed where it doesn't look right compared to what's been presented?
We do have the interim. We do have the interim option.
I want to make sure.
Well, and thank you, Shannon, that was very thorough. I would I would like to just kind of loop back around to the government-only options, and I, we do not presume to attribute a hundred percent of the cost of the lease and those things to the government. But that negative number at the bottom would be what we would have to generate if we wanted to continue public access services. But when we were requested to provide these different scenarios, it didn't seem appropriate to add fundraising and earned revenue to government services, so we, I didn't include those pieces. So we recognize that there's a big negative number at the bottom, and if we were going to continue to do public access, that would be what we would have to generate in order to continue to support the community in that scenario, if if there was no revenue to support public access.
It was a slide that Shannon had that showed minimal participation in classes. But one thing I'm curious about is how COVID may have affected that and what the numbers looked like pre-COVID.
COVID had a huge impact. We actually, our most current contract prior to the extension was a three-year contract that was signed prior to COVID at the end of twenty nineteen, and then we closed our doors in March of twenty twenty. So we were closed for two years. We did some things online, but, you know, when you're doing a teaching a class, it requires a hands-on kind of scenario. It's kind of hard to do that through Zoom. So it did have a significant impact on things like training and facilities use. What we have seen, and I recognize that those numbers, you know, don't necessarily blow you away when you see them, but we have seen a significant uptick in equipment reservations, class role, class enrollments, studio and facilities use, and program and content coming in since the first of this year compared to last year. We unlocked our doors on April fourth of last year. So we had, last year, we had nine months where we were kind of crawling out from under the rock, and we've just we've just seen a really significant change. So that slide that showed training, as of June of this year, we've had more enrollments than we did the entire year last year. And it it is continuing to to increase. So COVID, COVID had a greater impact on the public access piece because we continued our government support to continue to put meetings on the channels and those kinds of things. It it really slammed us for equipment and reservations, that kind of thing, training, but that's bouncing back.
I think the I think the bottom line, and I think council is very well aware that I've been a strong supporter of TC Media, and I would like our relationship to continue. However, it's through conversations with the other jurisdictions. I don't have any confidence whatsoever that the other jurisdictions are going to extend their contract beyond December thirty first of this year. I mean, at this point, I think it's they're not going to do it. And I'd be, you know, I don't know how that would change, and so I think the big question is, is if if the other, all the other jurisdictions pull, what are we left with, you know, and that's the big scary scenario. And and I do think this did start in two thousand and nineteen when, you know, the rent was being covered by Comcast prior. You know, there's the, that had to be made up, you know, and the at the time, the jurisdictions were like, oh geez, are we going to have to cover this ongoing expense? Was this due for the long-term viability? Was it, was it, you know, with the PEG fees going down? And, you know, this cost going up, you know, is it cheaper for us just to do government only and let go of the public access and the educational side of it? And that is where I believe the other jurisdictions are are at at this point. They're going to all do government internally, and it's, you know, I think that's unfortunate, but I think that's where we're at.
Hey, guys. Little fresh frustration point for me at this point, because we're always talking about partnerships and working together for better community. And then now there's this big question mark, and and it seems like it's it's stronger bonds with different issues than than others. And this is one of the others where we we should know exactly, we should all be in this together. Not, you know, each of us picking up the one end of the stake together, you know. I don't know, it's just frustrating. We we should know exactly where we sit is what I'm getting at.
Go ahead, Robin.
I have a couple of questions. How many people work for Citi right now?
We, that's that's an interesting question because it's summertime and it's really busy. Generally speaking, we have ten heartbeats on our payroll. And some of them are forty hour a week, and some of them are thirty hour a week, but generally, there's there's ten heartbeats on the payroll. Summertime, like we have six youth and five extra hands because it gets crazy busy in the summer.
The reason I asked is, in different parts of the documents that you gave us, it says eleven. And it says five point five, and then it says four, and it says you're going to increase to fourteen, and I'm not sure where.
It depends on the services we're providing, you know, so if we're providing government support to all the jurisdictions, we need a few more hands on board. And if we're not providing government support to the jurisdictions, we don't need quite as many.
And so I think that's an important, because with the standard proposal that came back with RFP is looking at the first year of supporting eleven FTEs, growing to fourteen by by the the end of that contract term. And then with those various options, where you saw the movement in the in the budget to help balance things was limiting the FTE. So with one of the jurisdictions stepped away, those scenarios, those are all caught up with reduction in FTE, so your service levels go down. And the same with the government channel, that's where it starts out with a four, four and a half or something like that.
My other question, the thing that I didn't see among the many options that you costed and provided, and thank you for this, was an option where you don't continue to lease your space. And I don't know if that's a possibility, but I mean, we're in this whole quite a lot because Comcast is now charging me quite a bit for the space.
It's not Comcast that's doing it, so and I and I would offer that we were never directly, we were never directly contacted by Comcast. It was all through the franchising process, so the juris- the franchising team was told by Comcast, and we were then told that the the conversation about the lease was a little, it was like, well, things are things are still, you know, there's these, all these things are still on the table to be negotiated. So when we got a firm date, like, okay, they're they're saying no, and they want you out. It took a little bit of time and and a lot of questions asked to find out, did they really want the space or did they just not want to pay for it? And it turned out they just didn't want to pay for it. And our space has a million dollars worth of infrastructure in it, and to move a facility like that is hundreds of thousands of dollars. And it, for us, made more financial sense to stay put because we had everything in place and do upgrades when we needed to do upgrades than to try to find a space, build out a space, move the facility.
It was a massive.
It wasn't, yeah, in twenty months was the timeline, so, you know, we can various people have various opinions about whether or not that was, you know, the best course of action, but we've we've been able to support that for, obviously, for last year and a half, and presume that our relationship with the jurisdictions would continue.
Obviously, in your own projections, you're showing a massive increase on fundraising and other things where up to now, you haven't seen that. You haven't had to do it, you haven't had that same thing, you know. What happens if you can't meet those fundraising projections? And I think that's where some of the jurisdictions are at right there. They're like, well, you're putting some numbers down here that you need to do to balance your budget, but there's just no way and you're going to be able to do it.
Well, they are certainly aspirational. We've hired a development director, we brought in more in grants this year than we've ever brought in before up to this. We're almost pushing forty thousand dollars in grant dollars year to date. Our thirty thousand, our earned revenue is up. In in most normal years, and I don't know if, you know, we can talk about that now that we're kind of post-COVID, our our earned revenue and contract services and those kinds of things generated revenue that exceeded the revenue we generally received from the city of Lacey or from the city of Tumwater. We were the we were the third biggest chunk of the financial pie. So we're trying to build back up to that. We also have new services and resources, well, I won't say resources, more certain new services that we're rolling out that we can put a fee on that we think will be a revenue, will be revenue generators for us, like menu rental, like for, you know, film and that, because now we're paying the rent on the building, it makes more sense for us to generate revenue from the building itself. So that's that's a big piece that we're looking at, is those kinds of new earned revenue opportunities. But we're also writing grants and getting sponsorships, we had a very generous sponsorship for captioning. You know, that came in when we when we launched captioning, we're rolling out, actually, you can go to the App Store right now and look for Thurston Community Media, and there's an app for all of our programming that we're rolling out, that puts us on Roku and Apple and Fire. You know, so those are services that are rolling out that have been a minimal cost increase because our playback system is or playback vendor is involved in this. But now, everything that we do on channel three, twenty six, and seventy seven is seen on all of those platforms and streamed twenty-four seven. So those are things that, you know, when when our public access members want to have access to those platforms.
So the bottom line here is, I still don't.
We're planning.
I still don't, I still haven't had any indication that the other jurisdictions are going to re-up the contract. So 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 where does that leave us, and from and especially from us as a budgeting standpoint, like if come December thirty first, the other jurisdictions don't up the contract, which I don't think they are unless something maximum, we have to pivot, right? We have to figure something out on our end, and that's where we're at today. It's like, what do we do as a council? Because we can't just wait till the end and then try to figure something out. We have to make a decision as a part of a budgeting process, what what's the next step? And what staff is proposing is, let's just do government only, we'll hire someone, they'll do, they can stream our videos, and then we'll have them for other things, and, you know, I buy public access and education, and that's the way it goes.
But that's, I think, Council's end.
Uh, Stephen, you have?
Yeah, I'll just say, myself, regardless of what other jurisdictions do, I I believe that a service provided by them to our residents is well worth it even if we go solo. So I will support doing business with TC Media regardless who's in or who's out. But I would I would stress to our partners and our community, our community partners, that we should all be in this together and provide the service for our residents because I think it's a worthy and valued service.
The problem with that is it obviously does, if we go alone, there's not enough funding there to do it, obviously. You can't operate with just us.
That's one of the things we're looking forward to, and I will, you know, provide some great information and is going into the budget. How do we approach budget and get some guidance?
Provide some great information and is going into the budget, how do we approach budget and get some guidance because, uh. You know, ultimately, um, we're gonna have to make some decisions and also what's the best interest of the city of Lacey as well. Uh, so the next section of, of Shannon's presentation is gonna go through the internal. And go through what that looks like. And then going into budget program, figuring out, okay, how do we approach it, get that direction and then. You know, we have to wait and see what the other jurisdictions officially do.
It sounds like the other jurisdictions have not.
They haven't.
You've been having some conversations.
And I think it's gonna happen is they're not gonna vote. They're just gonna let the contract expire. There's no, there's no, they don't have to vote for anything. The only reason why they would vote is to extend the contract. If they do nothing, the contract just.
They're, they're gonna, they're gonna go through their budgeting processes and review what their needs are. And what they're uh, looking at and what the long term uh, contract would look with TC media and make those decisions through that budgeting process. But there isn't an official decision. But the other thing too is if there is a, a change in direction. You know, we want to try to get as much notice out to all the partners in advance, so there's time to prepare and plan and coordinate.
What, what does that, what does that mean when, cause you're, we have to know what the other jurisdictions are gonna do. Because we can't just go alone. And we're, yeah, it's like we're gonna know.
If we send a clear message saying, hey, we're in, no matter what, please join us. We put the, the pressure back on them. Uh, and then there's no question mark if we're gonna move forward. And then we just, we, we deal with it after.
But, well, yeah, but then that doesn't, that doesn't work. We can't just go alone, you know, uh. We have to be all in together, I believe, for this to continue to work, even if we scale it back and the numbers change. We still have to do it together or.
Or everybody has to deal with their own. Yeah, it's an all or nothing kind of deal.
Right?
I, I don't disagree. I, I did share with Rick, I said, you know, the, the original RFP was submitted almost ten months, ten months ago. So the numbers on that RFP are ten months old. And I've, you know, we've, I have pondered lots of different op- options and. I would be more than willing to put together another proposal that.
Show government only.
So let me ask.
Just, just, just.
Let me ask you this. So, so if all the jurisdictions decide not to play ball and nobody signs a new contract with TC media. Is that the end of TC media or you're just gonna have to? Revamp how TC media runs?
Well, we would certainly be a very different organization. And we, we are, our, our mission would be different.
Be different.
Would have to be very different because our mission has always been to provide communication services to the community. To build stronger communities. And I, I mean, that, the, the philosophy behind that may not change, but. Um, operationally, we would have to change significantly.
Sure.
Significantly, so, and make a, make a really hard pivot.
Yeah.
Well, and one of the things too, just going back through the, the timeline is. You know, the, the RFP, the conversation about the franchise agreement, how that was ended up with Comcast not covering the rent anymore. Going into the RFP, the RFP was intended to be a um, um, out of cart type of uh, proposal where. Every jurisdiction had the opportunity to look at what their needs were and to pick and choose. And then the RFP response pretty much had everything in it. And then, of course, that's what spurred the conversations over the last several months and trying to get, okay. What does it look like with these various options or somebody goes a different direction or discovers government? And that's what. Uh, Deborah provided and Shannon's gonna go over. So we drive, we've been going through this, this, these iteration numbers and granted the RFP process or the. Response was about ten months ago, but we have been having these ongoing conversations to figure out what those options could look like. But ultimately too, we have our current platforms. And um, and it, uh, information going out as well in terms of our YouTube. You know, Facebook Live, all the various medias that we're already producing.
What we're talking about is gain, rev, gain, rev the public.
And trying to find that balance of what's that benefit versus that, that accountability of how we use our resources.
You mentioned that you have been able to do some freelance work since. You have the expense of the rent, uh, so outside of the scope of government, you've been able to do things like that. So are there other opportunities within the media world that you can focus on? Uh, to help make it profitable or at least break even?
We certainly are looking at that business development possibility and I mean, it's something that we've been doing and. A lot of, um, I. As we all know, COVID kind of turned the world upside down. So there's a lot of things that, um. Used to be a possibility that are not necessarily so much now, but there are new opportunities. And we're looking at that business development and how we can generate earned revenue through fee for service options.
I mean, so in our standpoint, I mean, I'm not sure. We still have to make a decision as council what we're gonna do. And it feels like it's an impossible decision at this point unless we know for a fact. What the other jurisdictions are gonna do, which we, I mean, we, at this point, like I said, I don't think they're gonna extend the contract. So I mean, it, it feels like we have to go on. With a stat proposal of, of trying to do it in-house because I, I don't know what other, what else we can do at this point unless there is some. We, we can, I know. We can s- say we're a strong supporter of TC media. We want to continue that, but it doesn't mean anything if the other jurisdictions aren't gonna go. Meas and, and all come together and try to figure out, out path forward.
I think for us, it's like, we just, we would like to know what. What the jurisdictions need service wise. I mean, I mean, more specific than we've had conversations about and then. We could, we could negotiate fees. I mean, that's, I think that's the piece of this that has. There's been a lot of talking about what TCPV is and can do, but there hasn't been a lot of talking with us, you know? And that, I mean, we've had more conversations with you. And that is, that's the piece for us that we'd like to have ongoing, more conversations about. You know, options and, you know. The, the numbers are negotiable.
Maybe we just say, we're definitely gonna do the government thing no matter what. But with our community partners, together we'll do it all. And, and, and leave it at, at least we're gonna do this no matter what.
I don't.
And then it leaves.
That would work.
It doesn't work if only we do. It's not enough revenue for them to make this work.
It does if they haven't made an answer on government yet or not, because they could still be in and we don't know it. They, you know, if, if, but if we're wavering.
Oh, that, you have something wrong?
I have a, maybe a contract or a legal question. So in these scenarios, you said. If you get this much support, you can provide these services. If Lacey says, we would like these services contingent on you being able to provide. So if we spend the money or we, we obligate the fund, we say, we're gonna do options. Which requires the other jurisdictions to join us. If they don't. That contract, if you cannot provide the services, you're not still.
Right.
So the risk of us saying, we'll go first, isn't that we would say, we'll go first and then our money is just gone and we don't get anything for it. If you can't provide the services, you don't collect on the money.
Council member, if I could, um, and just to kind of view the other side of that equation is that if that is the scenario. Which it plays out, then we would not have any options moving forward in twenty twenty four for providing government access.
We need to start. Planning for.
Some other way to provide the services.
Cause once, once you go in direction, you gotta do the.
Because we'll, we'll need to make some investments on our side and hire someone, so on, so forth, and that takes time.
Takes time, takes training and how long is it gonna take for us to hire somebody?
So when, when you, Neil, like, need to know the drop dead, like, you can go forward, not go forward. Is the, is the, rather, our communities can come together and try to find a solution or are we all gonna go? On our own. When, when do you need to know that number?
Well, we need, we're getting ready to go right into budgeting. And, and, and so we need to be able to, be able to plan for, for an option and we can, you know, look at. Um, you know. Having a contingency option if the jurisdictions don't uh, participate, we have, or planning for how we bring that onboard and bring those services. But there are some benefits to that for the city. Does, it didn't get, it does lose that public access piece.
And education piece.
And, and education piece, uh, but there's also mechanisms too, that prevents us from having direct contracts in the future. With a service provider can provide services or, or inboarding those ones ourselves because it's, uh, over time, you see some of the, the comparables. That Shannon went through, some of the other jurisdictions have done that, that stuff in-house. It would take some time to be able to ramp up if we could.
And then at this point, I, I really. Much as I hate to say, because I, I'm with you. I'd like to continue, but. It doesn't look like the other jurisdictions are, and that's just where it looks. So I think we have to plan for going on our own. And I think as you guys figure out what you're doing and how that looks, once you know what jurisdictions are doing. Then we can maybe contract back in some of that public access, some of that education, because hopefully you'll be able to still provide that.
Is that, is that possible?
I mean, I, I think that's where we go for now and then. Hopefully we can have some conversations with, well, we need to have the jurisdictions all discussing this together, obviously, and some, somehow. And if they all go, then, you know, great, we go that route. We go back to.
Yeah, we give them deadline, so like two weeks or a month deadline? For an answer, no direction going.
I mean, we're small, so we can, we can, you know, we can move more quickly, I think. So, um, obviously the sooner the better. We're in the middle of strategic planning on a one and a three year plan. And the decision will have a huge impact on what that looks like.
And, and I don't, just to respond to Councilman Stedman's comment, I don't think a deadline is gonna help in this situation. Cause every jurisdiction is going through their own process and so that, that would be very difficult to even pray to one and that's. Makes sense, so.
It's not official. We have no authority to set any deadline.
I'm not doing it, then the deadline shouldn't be an issue because they just say, hey, why am I not doing it?
Well, I don't know, I don't know how we get to a point where we hear, we get an official response from the other jurisdictions. I mean, I don't know.
They're gonna work on it through the budget process.
They're gonna work on the budget process and I guess we'll have to look at their budget and through their budget, they're gonna say they're no longer, they're gonna do stuff in-house and they're gonna no longer.
You'll see them hiring somebody for that.
So. Going forward, what I'm hearing is that we should start preparing for uh, bringing new services or government services in-house. With the idea that we're still talking and listening about potential city contract services going forward, long term. And but meantime. Really looking at what is it gonna take to bring uh, government services in-house and they provide that.
Um, I think we, there's no other choice, the, the, but Robin?
I don't wanna jump the queue because Shannon hasn't finished her presentation.
What that looks like, but yeah.
I'm mentioning that is that I have a question in my mind about the opportunity for us to provide in-house government services. And continue to sustain public and educational access. And I, I would like to learn the cost of that. And I think that's a part of what Shannon's gonna present on next because. I think there is value in what TCPV provides to the community. In those two other sections that we're not planning to provide if we go our, our alternate route. And so I, I want us to explore that.
You want to uh, finish the rest of the, there's only a few more slides, talk about what that alternate. What the value is, because there's also pieces too, uh, I just wanna Ryan, you know, highlight is. We also have the communication plans, which has been a priority for council and some priority actions. And there are two that could be also met with, with this options.
All right. Well, we'll go to the third part of uh, the presentation, which is just a general overview of an alternative option that would be an internal option. Um, and before I get uh, to kind of the specifics of it, and actually maybe I will get to the specifics, we'll start off a general overview. So the idea would be with this alternative option would be to provide all government access internally and to not provide public access services. Um, like I mentioned, I don't know, uh, probably an hour ago at this point. Um, uh, the ongoing services would be for an additional FTE within the public affairs um, departments. And that would be around a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And we anticipate that about twenty five percent of the additional capacity that we add would be spent on government services. And that the other uh, almost a hundred thousand dollars of that would be for other communication needs, which would be about seventy five percent of that uh, position. Uh, we'd also need some one-time capital costs to make that transition. Um, and so that would require around fifty to seventy thousand dollars. And that would allow for the expansion of the city's communication capacity, as Rick mentioned, in alignment with our communications plan. Um, there are some cities that do provide um, just government services and using the same kind of casta system that TC media does. Which allows them to put materials on to um, cable broadcasts in addition to streaming broadcasts. So I'm just giving you an example of Pasco, which has a PSC TV. They've got their live stream going on right here on their page and then also their program schedule, which allows you to see what's coming up, what's ongoing, what's live, uh, et cetera. Um, we reviewed this information last time I presented this, so I do wanna just recognize that this is twenty, it says twenty twenty three dollars. Um, and then that would be slightly increased for, you know, twenty twenty four dollars. But what we'd be looking for is a video playback server and that is that casta system that I just mentioned. And um, we think this is a very high estimate, but I'm channeling my inner Troy Wu here. And I'm going for a conservative estimate. Um, we'd also need some minor uh, technology upgrades in addition to some uh, fiber transmission connections possibly between uh. Here at City Hall and with Comcast services. And so we anticipate again that this would be around fifty to seventy thousand dollars. Um, and that would be our, our one-time costs. And then moving forward. Uh, we would be able to make some minor purchases each year with the idea that we might do a future expansion phase. Um, in a subsequent year and then a third expansion phase and a, and another year after that. And what those phases could look like, just generally speaking, could be something like we're doing a uh, overhaul of the city council chambers. Uh, it could also be adding cameras at other meeting spaces. So as an example, in our community center, that could be an option. It could be getting mobile um, support. So we could actually have a vehicle that supports video services for events and programming. So there's options that the city could consider for enhancing those services through uh, additional one-time costs. Uh, moving on to the o- ongoing, um, you can see that most of that is salary, wages and benefits. Uh, we also did budget though, some um, a budget for contract services, knowing that there would be cases where we would likely want to bring on somebody. To maybe help with the production, uh, get an extra camera. So we do have a budget um, included as part of that. Um, in addition to just some general M and O costs that we might want to uh, take a look at. So that would total about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And so collectively, uh, we'd be looking for that first startup year for around two hundred thousand dollars. But again, uh, seventy thousand of that in this particular uh, total would be dedicated to those one-time expenditures. Uh, you can see that, that uh, total expenditures uh, decreases in the next years because they do not have the significant capital improvements. Um, until we go into phase two or phase three of improvements. Um, and so uh, looking at uh, where the funding for this would come from. Um, the bulk of the ongoing costs would come from the general fund. So this would be paying for, um, you know, the one FTE. And then a lot of the capital costs would uh, be uh, paid for through our reserves and PEG and then future PEG accruals. So as you can see, for example, here to offset some of the one-time costs, we could use some existing PEG reserves. And then uh, we would be accruing PEG uh, funds around thirty four thousand. That's what we uh, showed. As kind of the average the last couple of years. And so we could use those for uh, future capital increases.
Those could only be used for capital, correct?
Correct.
Am I remembering right that the PEG fees are divided up by. Service lines and that government is the largest portion of them or is it just one big bucket?
So PEG is, it's, it's, it's one big bucket. So we uh, collect it on a kind of prescriber basis. And Comcast remits that to us and then we provide fifty percent to TC media currently and then we have, we retain fifty percent. And that's uh, similar to all of the jurisdictions. Um, and so uh, we would, this, this down here is just showing how we would use those funds, uh. And then you can see here, when we're looking at our total expenditures and our total revenues, we would certainly wanna balance everything out again, channeling my inner Troy Wu here. Uh, but then also take a look at it, continuing to accrue our PEG reserves so that when we come to potential future phases such as phase two or phase three. We would have capital funds to offset some of those additional one-time expenditures.
So that's, that's our expen- our expenditures. And how you compare that to what we're doing with TC media right now?
So currently our contract is for a hundred and thirty two thousand and so not including one-time expenditures, it's comparable.
Yeah, so but this is, this is gonna be a more expensive option and we don't get education. Public access or education out of this.
So that is correct, but let me tell you what could be possibilities. So again, we anticipate that this would provide. Uh, capacity for twenty five percent to be devoted to government services. And then seventy five percent would be for other communication opportunities in alignment with our uh, strategic plan. So, um, our uh, strategic plan does identify goal three, which is to proactively craft communications and establish a defined Lacey brand. And this includes uh, creating consistent city materials, uh, refining key messages and creating a unified voice. Enhancing the city's imaging by developing a comprehensive marketing and branding campaign. Enhancing the city's imaging by developing a comprehensive marketing and branding campaign, uh continuing partnerships with uh organizations and stakeholders. To leverage uh messaging and marketing, uh to identify and refine future market segments and communication strategies. And to provide an emphasis on disseminating information to uh community stakeholders. And so we uh do think, looking at some ways and areas that this might expand, some additional capacity would be within the strategic communications. Particularly, they could be focused on things like the style guide, the marketing branding guide, uh communication strategies, crisis communications. Monthly updates, weekly reports, language access, and inclusivity. So just to provide kind of an example of what some of these look like. Um, so style guides and marketing and branding, what I'm showing here on the right-hand side is the city of San, San Diego. Um, and basically, this is a comprehensive um guide for every single message that the city puts out. So that it looks and feels consistent, so when people see the city of San Diego, they know that this is actually from the city of San Diego. It matches all of their language needs, um, it's inclusive, there's thought about color and other um access materials. And so it's a guide, and you know, it's not just creating the guide, it's then implementing the guide, which as I'm sure uh you all are aware. We have uh kind of multiple forms of various uh logos and documents and all of that out there. And this would be providing kind of that uniformity to get that comprehensive look and feel. Um, it would also be providing um good uh examples for, um, you know, what we do for digital content. Um, so not only kind of our social media platforms, but also looking at how we present the city. So on the left-hand side, I'm showing a picture from the city of Boulder, and they're talking about how to use imagery and what kind of images that they're looking for. So in this example, they're showcasing uh their firefighter service, and they're saying, you know, make sure to use uh professional and personable staff. You know, to make the city, um, you know, more connected to the community, giving it that human feel. Um, it could also be used to really help enhance our community, our communication strategies, and including crisis communication, such as emergency uh communications. What I'm showing over here on uh the right-hand side is from the city of Modesto's uh communications plan. And it really breaks down a very defined system and way to get kind of unified messaging on various uh projects. And initiatives that the city is putting together and um giving a good process that is clearly defined. Uh, it also shows kind of a, just a communications uh yeah, yeah, template that could be used. So something that would be uh distributed and disseminated through various means, um, you know, this could look like email, eventually, this could look like something like the internet. But that would be able to provide a very high-level overview of projects and initiatives that the city is working on, including what's the goal of the project? What's the audience, what are some key messagings, what's some key talking points? So really helping refine those messages for stakeholders like yourself, as well as staff members. As they talk with community members about ongoing projects and initiatives here at the city. It could also look like enhancing our um uh monthly updates and our weekly reports. So currently, we do have the Lacey Life with, which is a monthly uh way to get information out, it is um limited to that uh. One-page front and back document, um, this could be something that we take and put more resources into looking into weekly updates. That gets not sent out by mail, but you know, perhaps by internet or email, I should say, as well as our social media platforms. So what I'm showing you here on the right-hand side is the city of Lakewood's uh weekly city manager's bulletin. This gets posted every Friday, it provides information on what's coming up the next week on the city, as well as what happened the previous week, including council actions. And then actions that are coming before the council, and then on the left-hand side, we've got the city of Coronado, California's city manager update. Which is a very similar weekly um vehicle for getting information out, but it also includes a lot of video content. So for example, the city manager uh says a little bit about what's going on in the city of Coronado that week. It could also be used to really help enhance some of our language access, um, and really make sure that we are providing uh inclusive plain talk. With all of our city communications, um, so as an example, again, on the uh right-hand side, I'm showing you the city of Boulder. And the city of Boulder is their uh communications um inclusive language plan. Um, and you can see it's providing some common do's and don'ts, uh how to reframe languages into plain talk. And again, it's not just creating these documents, it's about implementing these documents, being able to work with other staff members on uh getting the most clear. And accessible information out to the community.
So Shannon, you think one additional full-time person brings all of this and bringing in-house the government services?
I think it helps to certainly start this process. Um, and again, it doesn't mean, uh, this is, this is to give a, a sample of what it could do, right? And so certainly, you know, we'd wanna take a look at what that body of work could look like, but just to kind of highlight some of the key elements that they could be working on. And um this would again just be capacity for the public affairs staff to be able to provide some additional services.
They could, they could look at our existing resources, what they're doing, perhaps something else comes, especially if they get freed up to do some of these other things, or also produce more. Uh, community video content, so we talked about government services, it's also that information, not just broadcasting the meetings and, and.
I don't, I don't think it's fair to say. One where you're gonna have one or the other, either way, we go forward with a way is, or you're gonna have this.
He's trying to figure out that public access piece, that's important as well, but how do we do that? And if we can't, what are the other options that we have? And what is that, how's that meet the city's priorities?
I know this is a fun part of our communications plan that we've been talking about for a long time, and yes, I would like to see it uh implemented. I don't, I don't know how you're mixing this into another, something else as well, but that, that's fine.
So I guess, um, Mr. Mayor, just to summarize, it's because we believe that government access services could be twenty-five percent of an F T E. So that's, that's kind of the, the nexus and the connection, but ultimately, at the end of the day, we believe that government access and providing it here in-house would be twenty-five percent of F T.
If I may, um, I'm gonna say this as gently as I can, but. Um, I do believe Lacey would do as good a job, um, at least comparable, i- if not better. But this whole discussion we've had the last hour plus ultimately r- results into people, whether they're gonna have a job or not. Cause if, if this falls through, people are gonna get laid off. And, and no one ever talks about that, no one talks about people losing their job until it's their job. So I just wanted to make sure, not just us, but our community partners hear this, cause you're affecting real people's lives. So, um, again, I'm sure we'll, if it does happen, city Lacey will hire probably one of their employees. And we'll do a great job, but it, it is uncomfortable to talk to, talk about, but it does need to be said, and I'll just leave it at that.
I'm still looking at the proposal from T C media to provide public and community access. The cost for Lacey would be a hundred and seven thousand dollars for just the education and community access, so public and community access is stupid. So this proposal to add an F T E that could do the government piece and also attain a lot of our communications goals, a hundred and thirty. So we're looking at two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. Which is about what we would pay if we continued with the full slate of services with T C media.
But we have full control, it's all in-house.
The government piece.
Just the government piece, yeah, not the ongoing education.
I really like uh what was presented, I, I think that we have better control and uh better branding if we do things in-house. I know that uh cutting the tie with T C media is a difficult decision to make. I was upset when we lost Blockbuster. You know, I loved going to Blockbuster and getting my videos for the weekend, but uh technology improves, things change, it happens.
Yeah, I mean, I don't. Yeah, I mean, uh, at, at this point, I'm not, what, what direction are you looking for from us at, at this point?
Well, I just primarily wanna get the conversation to keep the full council, to get, hear some feedback, also wanna give some uh guidance going into the budget, how we should be preparing for the budget. Uh, one of the things we have the internal option, we still have, you know, ultimately, uh, I, what I've heard is the desire is to continue the current partnership going forward. But the, the uncertainty of what the other jurisdictions are doing is present, so we need to probably plan for the alternatives, and that we can start working on that within the budget.
And I think we need to include in that the idea that we probably, hopefully would be able, if they're able to do it, contract out some of that. Public access, education access, cause I, I don't think we wanna lose that real.
And, and that is also something, thank you for bringing that, cause I had that, written that down, but the, um, you know, looking at other contracted service or direct, or specific contracts going forward. Some of what we do with like D E D C and some other programs, but that also is gonna have to be contingent upon um other funding sources and being able to deliver on those services.
You know, Shannon, that you've been meeting with President, does that the other jurisdictions about this? It still feels a little squishy to me about where the other jurisdictions are, and maybe it's just that we're being careful about the language we use. Because nobody's taking a formal vote, but. Is there any point at all in trying to get an inter-jurisdictional meeting together on this?
I've done that, I've tried to do that, I've tried to pull the, the leadership, the, the mayors, the, you know, the, the. Of the main cities together, twice, and um, I just really feel like the. There's been a lot of talking past T C media and talking internally, and I, I don't think there's any sort of desire to try to figure out. Um, a solution here, I feel like they, uh, the other jurisdictions are um, are upset with how things have gone. And they've, they've decided they're going in a different direction, and, and that's their prerogative, but I keep saying is, what, what upsets me. Uh, on this whole process is that, and Stedman brought this up, and um. We keep talking, we're, we're gonna try to do things regionally on everything we do, right? And we're gonna do it because it provides better um services to, to our community, and we can do it for cheaper if we're all in it together. Except for this one thing, where, where we can do it cheaper, but only if we don't provide the, the other services, right? Uh, yeah, we can do the government in-house, you know, one F T E, half, twenty-five percent, one F T E, even we can do it in, in the house. But we're giving up a bunch of other services, and, and maybe the, you know, um, the. They don't have the same values that it does to me and those who I think most of this council, but um, I think that's where we're at, I think the other jurisdictions. Look, are looking at the government piece too, they're looking at the cost savings overall, saying geez, hiring F T E, we can do this in-house, we can do all these other good stuff. And that's all, great, that communications plan, and we've been talking about, I've been talking about that for years and years and years, well, love to implement that as soon as we possibly can, you know? But it, it's, uh, you know, I, I just feel it's unfortunate that the jurisdictions got together to create T C media. And now we're saying, oh, T C media, you haven't sort of kept up with exactly how, you know, we are gonna do things, so we're gonna go our own, we're gonna take our. Take our toys and go home, you know, and I think that's un, I think that's unfortunate, uh, I haven't, only said it just here, I've said it. In the other meetings as well, too, so everyone knows exactly where I stand on this issue, um, but I don't know what it's gonna take. Because if, if there, the other jurisdictions are just gonna allow the contract to expire, that's not fair. I mean, we, we, and we, we're in that same boat, we're gonna have to pivot and go this direction, cause I don't have any faith at this point. The, we're gonna get together as a region and come up with a reasonable solution that's gonna keep business as it's been usual.
You discussed it, I'm assuming, in the mayor's forum?
Mayor's forum, and then the, the, the three cities meetings too, um, so.
I mean, the jurisdictions have had a partnership with T C media for thirty-six years. I think even if the other jurisdictions intend to end their relationship, they should provide that notice and take action. So make it a sort of tangible decision, so that T C media knows what to expect, and I would want us to do the same. Be affirmative with what we plan to do, not just let the contract lapse.
I agree, I agree. Which is why we're on this conversation tonight, so we can have this conversation and.
I think it's unfair that Lacey had to go first in all this, because you're, you're, you're putting us in a, a very difficult position, like, oh, we, we continue our contract as normal. But we can't, we're not gonna be able to do that, because the other jurisdictional partners, and you're making us have to go first on this and, and be public about it. Well, I know, but it's, it's not, it's not fair, especially when, I don't think it's Lacey making a decision that we're gonna end our relationship with T C media.
I'm being forced into that decision, I don't want it or not.
I think we can keep talking to the other city. I, I don't think that we should assume that they made their decision until they say they.
I think the writing's on the wall, I think you hit the nail on the head there, because you have tried to communicate with the other jurisdictions. They're dogging you, they're not following through, they're not sitting with you and having a cup of coffee and talking about how we're gonna keep T C media on the, on the table. They're avoiding the conversation, I think that's, that's a big tell right there.
I would agree with that.
Is there any chance that through our parks and rec programming, there might be some classes that could be offered? In taking advantage of the T C media studios?
That is currently happening, and actually, I think there's gonna be some uh classes being offered in the back half of this year, going into fall. Uh, there are also classes offered through Olympia's Park Rec Program this last spring for the summer, so that is something that could, that is currently happening. And could also continue on depending on the status.
So, so what, what I would recommend to this council is that we go forward with the staff's recommendation of, of looking to hire a person to bring them in-house. With a caveat that if the region did decide wanna get, come up with a, a different solution, that we'd be open to that, but we need to. Come up with that solution by, you know, before we pass or, you know, by its next couple of months at the very least, uh, because.
That gives them the direction that, I think that gives staff the direction they need to be able to move forward with a budget based on this for now. You know, as, as we all know, we, budget amendments, the budget's only good for the moment we pass it.
And we're giving our best signal to the other jurisdictions that we want to try to collaborate if possible.
Yeah, possible. Helps uh Devon T C media also know, have that kind of conversation, so, thank you.
Is the uh discussion? With that, uh, we've reached the end of our agenda.
Wanna acknowledge it? I just wanna acknowledge Shannon. Uh, today she gave her capstone presentation, and now she's wearing a shiny new pin, she's received her certificate of public management today. In addition to all her, all their great work she's been doing for the city, so I really appreciate her, her efforts.
Well done, Shannon.
With that, um, objection, I'll call it a meeting adjourned.